I'd like to call the November 20th meeting of Board of Commissioners to order. Our first order of business would be the invocation by our county manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the commissioners tonight in their deliberation and grant them wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, we thank you for the gift of life and all of those you have brought into our lives to lead us, guide us, and to protect us. For those traveling to be with family and friends, we ask that you grant them a safe journey. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep reverence and respect for the faiths, traditions, and beliefs of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Now, our pleasure leads by Deputy County Manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the elected officials tonight. Sheriff Miller in the back, thank you, sir, for being here. And Becky, Ms. Becky Pollard, our Register of Deeds, thank you, Becky, for being here tonight. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or the vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented and with the agenda item for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed or permitted. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is now in order.
So moved.
Got a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Item two, approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any Board member that would like to have anything removed for discussion at the end of the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Second. Motion to approve the consent agenda is passed. Okay, we'll move on now to public comment section. Mr. Cotton, has anyone signed up, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to section A, general items under 4A. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Onslow County Courthouse follows the state of North Carolina's holiday schedule, and they will actually be closed Wednesday, December 27th, which does not match up with the county's holiday schedule. We are closed the 25th and the 26th. So the only office that follows the county's holiday schedule is Register of Deeds, so they would be the only office open in the courthouse on the 27th. Ms. Pollard, the Register of Deeds is respectfully requesting that they be allowed this additional day of their office being closed, December 27th. However, it would not be an additional paid holiday for staff. They would, the Register of Deeds staff, would use accrued comp time and/or vacation time. They're just requesting that the office be closed since all the other offices in the courthouse will be closed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a comment. The Register of Deeds office is very important, and in my industry, real estate, that means it's another day at the end of the year that we're not going to get any houses closed, and people are not going to be able to make their purchases at the end of the year. It'll be difficult to get those closings in for just in just two days of the year. So I think it's something that we need to consider. I certainly understand their situation, but it is economically not good for our economy to have that Register of Deeds office closed. So that would be my comment.
Any further?
I have a question. Sheriff, could you come up for a second? How many deputies would it take just to cover that one office?
Well, we can.
Because of the people coming in and out of the courthouse?
Yeah, to answer your question, we can position as many deputies as necessary, and I can certainly find out what the need is. I would say at least two.
At least two. So that would cost us two deputy salaries for that particular day.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Any further? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion to close on December 27th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do we have four to one? So I guess the ayes have it.
I guess you do.
Mr. Cotton, will you move on to item B?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute governing the countywide reappraisal process, the Schedule of Values for the 2018 Onslow County reevaluation was made available to the Board of Commissioners and also made available for public inspection on October 16th of 2017. During our last meeting on November 6th, 2017, a public hearing was held regarding the Schedule of Values for the 2018 reevaluation, which met the statutory requirement for conducting a public hearing at least seven days before adopting the schedules. Having met these statutory requirements, this item is now available for Board approval. The specific action requested is respectfully requested that in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 105-317(c)(3) and North Carolina General Statute 105-277(6b), the Board of Commissioners issue an order adopting the 2018 Onslow County revaluation Schedule of Values.
Motion? Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone, anybody have any questions from Mr. Smith? Those town meetings that you're having, they're pretty much publicized so people can actually know where to go and if they've got questions about the process and how to appeal. That's pretty much advert, is that going to be in the paper or?
I spoke with their communications office today. I know it's been posted on our website, and I believe they were planning on putting it out on social media. I understand it has been published in at least the Swansboro paper, the Titan News, I heard.
There's about.
We haven't purchased any advertising, to put the word out, but we have made it available for the media. Yes, sir.
All in favor of the, any further? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe C is Mr. Bryson said he was going to cover that one.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. As one of the larger EMS systems in eastern North Carolina, Onslow County has a partnership with several area community colleges to be a training center for future emergency medical technicians and paramedics to complete clinical intern ride along time. Ride time is a required component of their education in which students observe and participate in various aspects of patient care and crew resource management. This MOU is a renewal of the existing agreement between our organization to continue to allow students the opportunity to ride and learn as they work toward completing their educational degree or certification. We respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners consider approving the memorandum of understanding between Onslow County EMS and Lenore Community College and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bryson. I think D is also yours to cover.
Item D is a contract with Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. for ambulance billing and collections. Onslow County Emergency Medical Services is responsible for all response, treatment, and transport of 911 patients in Onslow County. In 2017, the Onslow County EMS will respond to approximately 22,500 requests for service and transport over 11,000 citizens and visitors to our county to approximately nine different hospitals in the region. Onslow County EMS bills for ambulance transport on a fee schedule recommended by the Center of Medicaid and Medicare Services. Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. provides ambulance billing and collection services for Onslow County EMS. Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. bills all government insurance carriers, including Medicare and Medicaid, as well as private insurance companies for ambulance transports completed by Onslow County EMS. This yearly renewal contract of $176,000 is for a percentage of the total collected revenue that is within the industry standard and has remained unchanged from the previous contract year. Just for additional information, that percentage is at 4%, and if we did pay out the $176,000, it meant we would take back in $4.4 million. We respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners consider approving the contract with Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. in amount not to exceed $176,000 and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Fee schedule amendment for solar farms, I think that's Mr. Ben Warren.
All right. Good evening to Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a proposed amendment to the planning fee schedule. Currently, we do not have any fees in place that would accommodate applications for solar farms within the county. Based upon the existing fee schedule, the standard building and electrical fees would be used to calculate the basic permit and application fee. And based upon that, a standard building fee is $200 plus 15 cents per square foot, and a standard electrical permit would be $100 plus 8 cents per square foot. And the current application that we have under review right now includes a little over 500,000 square feet of solar panel area. And based upon that current calculation, we would have a permit fee of about $117,000. And so we've done some research to look at other jurisdictions within our area and other comparable jurisdictions throughout the state to see what they charged for their standard solar farm review fees. And basically, the range that we identified was somewhere between 12 and 25,000, depending on how it was actually calculated. Some calculated based off of the cost of the project, some based off of square footage and just a range, but they were already all pretty consistent in the dollar figure and the range of permit fees. And so staff has proposed a, two fees. The building fee would be 1 cent per square foot of panel area, and the electrical fee would be 2 cents per square foot of solar panel area. And on the current application we have, that would put the permit fee at about $15,300, which is about a little more than the lowest competitor and a few thousand dollars less than the highest. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the Board may have on the current proposal.
Motion?
Motion to approve the fee schedule.
Motion and a second.
I'll give a second, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of controversy over the solar farms. Once they've outlived their life expectancy, is it in the contract that they have to remove it? Because we're hearing a lot of controversy that these farms, once they go divunk, nobody cleans them up, and now we have trash.
Yes, sir. As part of the zoning ordinance requirements, a decommissioning plan is required with cost estimate, or excuse me, cost proposals based on the overall size of the project, and that's required to be recorded in the Register of Deeds with the property. Based off of information we've received from the state and from others is that really the recyclable materials on the property are such that if they did decommission the farm, that it would be worthwhile for them to go behind and to recycle the materials on site.
Because doesn't the panels have some sort of liquid in them or something where there's some sort of contamination that can get into the ground? Is that true?
That I'm not aware of, sir.
There's some sort of something that comes out of these panels. Maybe it's mercury or something. I don't know what it is. I don't know much about what's inside the panels, but we have, a lot of people have called me up asking, you know, what happens when this farm starts to decay?
Yes, sir. And I know beyond just what the county requires, to even get to the point of requesting county permits, they have to go through the Utilities Commission for a certificate. Usually it takes about a year to a year and a half to go through the full environmental review and the different steps they have to go through in that process. And then they have to do annual renewals or updates on that as well. So the state monitors the process, and it would certainly monitor any decommissioning as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren, just for clarification, this is already permitted under the zoning, under our zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So all we're doing is setting a fee for the inspections?
Yes, sir.
Right.
There was some controversy too about flight paths for military aircraft and the reflection of the panels that would cause distortion to the pilots. And was that something that the military was worried, has the military weighed in on this?
Yes, sir. The requirements in the zoning ordinance basically require that the materials are of low reflectivity, and also any proposed project that's within five nautical miles of an airport, either public or private, or five nautical miles of the base proper have to go through a certain review. For the airports, they have to go through a full FAA review and comment, and for the base, they have to go through the Commander's Council for review and comment. And so we've had a couple of different applications that were within that range that have gone through that process.
Now, we don't have any solar farms in the county as of this time, do we?
No, sir. Not right now.
Other than Camp Lejeune. Camp Lejeune has numerous solar farms, so to speak. I mean, I've seen them out on 24 by Northeast Creek, coming in to, you know, to and from work by the main gate. So I know they have them, but we don't have any in the county. And even if they get to the point where they apply for them, there's a lot of hoops they have to jump through to actually get that permit environmentally and everything else.
Yes, sir. That is correct. I said it's about a year to a year and a half state process before they can come to us for the special use permit. Once they go through that, and that has a public comment period, but also once they come to the county, they go through the special use permit hearing, which notifies property owners within the 1,000 feet of the property boundary. And we also hold a public hearing through that process.
So state mainly, if, even if they were approved, even if we approve them, and the state, if they don't approve them, it still is not a, it still, it still wouldn't happen?
Yes, sir. And generally, we will not even consider the application for the special use permit unless the state certificate has been approved.
Any further questions, any from the other Board members? We have a motion, you just.
I may second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the fee schedule? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Health and Wellness Center, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The county went out for requests for proposals on August 14th of this year. Typically, we, an organization will go out for, well, solicit RFPs for one of three primary reasons. One is it's generally about that time to make sure that you're being a good steward of taxpayers' money. The other is it's contractually triggered, and then the other is based on satisfaction of those services. So we thought that it was time, just based on two of those factors, to solicit RFPs. We did receive two responses. One is Quicker Care, which is our current provider, and the other is Star Medical Clinics. And based on a staff analysis of the services as well as the cost, that the county should give notice to Quicker Care and enter into an agreement with Star Medical to provide those services to staff independents. So I would respectfully request and recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract with Star Medical Clinics, P L L C, and authorize the chairman to execute the contract on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion and.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
You, you need to go ahead and tell them. I mean, you already told us.
I'd like to say, just for the audiences and the people at home, this contract was around, last year was about $200,000 more last year, so we've reduced that cost by $200,000 from your.
Yes, sir.
Expert.
Based on the 40 hours.
Your evaluation.
We thank you, David, for the hard work to get it to that.
So you're up close to 3/4 of a million dollars you've saved the county so far since you've been manager. But anyway, the Wellness Center is really valuable to the employees. I, you know, I can go on and on about that, but it saves us a ton of money because we don't have to run through the insurance company. It's taken care of and takes care of our employees.
And no co-pay? Don't have to pay any co-pay?
No co-pay. Even the medicine for the employees are provided?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Airport Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, Mr. Keith Fountain, representing the Jacksonville Township, and Mr. Lewis, representing the Richland Township. Their terms expired September 30th of this year. Both Mr. Fountain and Mr. Lewis have expressed a willingness to continue their service and have provided the requisite citizen participation application. The vacancies have been advertised, and they are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Fountain for the Jacksonville Township and Mr. Lewis for the Richlands Township for a three-year term expiring September 30th of 2020.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consolidated Human Services Committee, Senator B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The 11-member board is several specific, I'm sorry, seat-specific positions, and those are up for your consideration. Dr. Carol Cardoni for the general category, seat 3. Ms. Victoria Kell for the nurse category, and Dr. Gina Francis for the veterinarian category. Terms expired on November 18th of this year. They've all expressed an interest and a willingness to continue service. They have submitted their citizen participation application, and their vacancies have been advertised, and the applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Dr. Carl Cardoni, general category, seat number 3. Ms. Victoria Kell, nurse category, and Dr. Gina Francis, veterinarian category, all for three-year terms expiring on November 18th of 2020.
So moved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to appoint these three individuals? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ashley Fairclough, Richland's Township, Ms. Mary Thomas at large, their terms expired on June 30th of this year. Both have expressed a willingness to continue serving. Mr. Homer Springs Jr. does not wish to be considered for an additional term as the Jacksonville Township representative. Mr. William Shanahan has expressed a willingness to serve on the, representing the Jacksonville Township category. All three have submitted citizen participation applications. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancies have been advertised. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Ashley Fairclough for the Richlands Township, Ms. Mary Thomas at large in their respective categories, and appoint Mr. William Shanahan, Jacksonville Township, all for three-year terms expiring June 30th of 2020.
All of.
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Onslow Civic Affairs Committee.
Mr. Renato Prince, Commissioner Representative, and Mr. Dan Witten, Commissioner Representative. Terms expired on September 30th of this year. Both Mr. Prince and Mr. Witten have expressed a willingness to serve and have provided citizen participation applications. Additionally, Mr. David B. Cotton, county manager, has recommended Ms. Sharon Russell as the county manager's office staff representative. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancies have been advertised. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. Respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Renato Prince, Commissioner Representative, Mr. Dan Witten, Commissioner Representative, for two-year terms expiring on September 30th, 2019, and Ms. Sharon Russell as the county manager's office staff representative.
Mr. Cotton, can you vouch for Ms. Russell?
I think so. Yes, sir.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You hired. Consent agenda, we didn't have anything for that. Public comment, anyone signed up for the last part?
No, sir. No one signed up.
Okay. Floor is yours, Mr. Cotton.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners comment. Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. We had a meeting last Thursday with DOT, and Vice Chair was with us, and Mr. Price was with us, and so was David and Sharon. And the outcome of that meeting looks like to me, we're going to get a lot of assistance and a lot of help out of DOT for the airport, for the tower, everything that's out there involved, the runway extension, hoping the roadways. We were very adamant about trying to get a new road cut in, and we did push that issue pretty hard. Anthony Prince with the Jacksonville Transit, I mean, this individual, he's just amazing. Jack and I sat on the board with him, and he, he has so much knowledge and information, and is really helpful to us with the DOT situation. And if we could get a new road cut from 258 to the airport would really be a help, instead of going through 111, which is very dangerous as it is anyhow. And what we're concerned with is truck traffic hauling, a lot of fuel is holding. I didn't realize how many trucks of fuel goes into that airport, just for the aircraft that have to go out of there, not counting if we get any of the type cargo aircraft coming in with the tower. With the cargo, they have to have trucks to haul it out of there, and Jack and I both can witness accidents on 111, and when there's an accident on 111, you can't get to the airport. So we're hoping that DOT, and there is a map that shows that going through the farmland and whatnot from 258 over, the piece of road that has been approved is from Ramsey Road to, actually Ramsey Road to 111. That road will come into 258. So that's been approved, and that's on the tip. The money's there for that particular project. But the meeting we had with both those individuals, and David, you can chime in if you want, or Sharon, I mean, it was, I thought it was one of the best meetings we've had when it comes to trying to find out what we're going to get for Onslow County and for the airport area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
I was able to attend an open house there of the caring community dental clinic that was opened up in Northwood Shopping Center area. I was glad to hear that that would alleviate some of the stress on Onslow Memorial Hospital when they have dental emergencies to come in, that those folks can be referred to this dental clinic. And so that's good news for Onslow County. news for Onslow County there. Also, I'd like to congratulate Coach Bo Williams and Jacksonville Cardinals on their second round win versus Terry Sanford, and good luck as they travel to Western Alamance over Burlington area. Also, congratulations to Coach Dempsey and Southwest High School Stallions on their second round win versus Southwest Edge Com, and good luck Friday night as they travel to East Bladen. This was the 400th program win for Southwest High School. That's especially, special moment in program history there. Hope you're able to travel and support Onslow County's athletes Friday night as they go on to the third round. Anytime you're practicing on Thanksgiving, you've had a great season. So congratulations to both of those teams. Have a happy Thanksgiving and have a good evening.
Okay. Commissioner Neff.
Real quick, I just want to give a, to say something to Philip Morton and his family to tell them that they're in our prayers. He's going through a rough time now, so if you would keep him in your prayers, it'd be greatly appreciated. It was a, it was a great event yesterday. Sad, sad time, but I think he'll get through it, and I just want him to know that we're thinking of him, we're praying for him, and that, you know, that we love him, and we're going to do whatever we can to help him and his family out. Second thing is David got married, and nobody's mentioned that. I just want to say congratulations to David. He just got married. He was gone for, how long were you gone for? Two weeks? Ten weeks? Ten days? Two weeks? One week. It feels like it was two weeks. But congratulations. I think that's fantastic. If you didn't attend the Christmas parade, the parade was nice. It was cold in the morning, and everybody bundled up, and then when we started riding the parade, it got really hot. So I don't know what that's about, but the parade was crowded. I think the Chamber of Commerce did an outstanding job. All the floats were interesting, to say the least, and, but I had a good time, and I think a lot of the people out there enjoyed themselves, especially to see all the kids out there. They're all excited. Kind of weird to have it before Thanksgiving, but nonetheless, it was a great success. And for Thanksgiving, please be safe. This is a time to be thankful. Let's not forget that. It's a special day, special week. For some of us, it means a lot, and to be with family and to think of those that have passed on. So count your blessings, say a prayer, and be safe, please. I know some people are traveling this weekend, whether they be flying or driving, just be safe and come back. So thanks for attending. I appreciate it.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman and I sit on the board of the Onslow Water and Sewer Authority, and the authority last week made two utility ordinance changes that I think are going to be very beneficial to our constituents in Onslow County. Just wanted to mention those changes. First of all, we changed ordinance to allow a financing plan for our citizens who are 65 years of age or older, who need to hook into the utility service and don't have the capital to pay cash for the $3,000, $4,000 fees that they need, $4,000 fees that they need to tap into the water service, and that can now be financed over a period of time for those citizens to help them out. I think that'll be a big benefit to our older citizens. Also wanted to mention that they changed the ordinance to allow a landlord to, to transfer water service into the landlord's name for a minimal fee of $20, rather than having to pay the cutoff, when a tenant moves out of their property, and they have to, the landlord has to pay a cutoff and a reconnect fee to have it connected in their name, and then the new tenant comes in, they have to have a cutoff and a reconnect fee. So all that's been streamlined now so that your landlords can, can file an application with Onwassa, and when a tenant moves out, they can automatically transfer that, that service into their name so they can keep the water service on. And it's $20? Yep, $20. And they can keep the water service on, and it'll, it'll be a big benefit to our landlords in Onslow County. So we appreciate the Onwassa Board for approving those ordinance changes. And other than that, I would say happy Thanksgiving. Becky, nothing against you guys. I don't mind you having a day off. You just gave a whole lot of real estate attorneys another day off, too, so. But, okay, have a, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Royce. Everything that needs to be said has been said. Just be safe on your travels for Thanksgiving holiday, and I want to thank the staff that come up tonight and presented the different facets of our agenda, did a good job and was able to explain it. And that's what makes, that's what makes these meetings go good, and that's what makes our job a lot easier when staff is tuned in and really knows their material. So other than that, have a safe trip home, have a happy Thanksgiving. Don't try to eat too much turkey or ham, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Second.
A motion. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.